I'd like to call the March 8th, 2021 Select Board Meeting to Order. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
I like that motion.
Sorry.
I'd like to add an executive session to the.
Okay. And what, what under Tim?
Um, I think this is under appointed positions or appointment or about or employment or evaluation of a public officer employee under the provisions of 1 VSA 313.
Okay, why don't we call that line item 12 and we can move adjournment to 13? Does that work for everyone?
Sure.
Okay. Um, is there?
Mr. Chairman or Mr. Town Manager? I have one thing I need to ask, and I'm sorry to ask because I know that some care went into this. I need to ask for an item to be removed from the consent agenda because I believe it's going to need a little bit of edit. So I would, I would suggest that number three, the consent agenda remain as presented with the exception of item C. Baby Roman numeral one, rules of procedure for select board of the town of Brandon, Vermont. It just needs a little bit of updating that I think maybe the board can do easily tonight.
So do we have a motion to omit line C1 from the agenda this evening?
Yeah, I would make that motion to omit item 3C1 from the consent agenda and to deal with it separately.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any other changes on the agenda as we see in front of us? No, all in favor of the agenda with the amendments, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Onto line item number two, the election of select board officers. The first one we have is election for the chair.
Seth Hopkins Chair.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for Mr. Seth Hopkins. Do we have any other nominations? No, going once, going twice. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Seth? Okay, motion carries. Mr. Hopkins is the select board chair again. Would you like me to turn the meeting over to you now or we want me to finish the rest of the?
The other two, if you would, yeah.
Um, we have any nominations for the vice chair of this select board?
I nominate Tracy Wyman.
Okay, we have a nomination for Tracy Wyman. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Michael. Do we have any other nominations? No? Okay, all those in favor of Tracy Wyman being the vice chair, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Congratulations, Tracy. And now we have the most important role of all, the election of the clerk of the select board.
I make a motion that Mike Markowski, being the new member, gets to do the clerk.
Oh, okay, anyone second, uh, their second from Mike Markowski?
I will.
Brian Coolidge seconds. Any other nominations? No, all right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? No, all right, motion carries. Congratulations, Mike. And now I'm going to turn the board over to Seth Hopkins.
Thank you, David Atherton. I appreciate that. Thanks to the board for reorganizing efficiently like that. I think what I'd like to do is do the consent agenda minus the one item that was pulled out. So the consent agenda, for those not familiar with the concept, is designed to be non-controversial items that don't require deliberation, debate, that kind of stuff. So is there any objection to taking item three as a consent agenda? That means we would take a motion and a second and then move straight to a vote on all of the items listed under number three, except for the one that was removed. I don't hear.
I'll make a motion to approve it as a consent agenda.
Motion for Mr. Wyman, is there a second? Second for Mr. Giles. All right, it's not debatable. All in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
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 That's unanimous. Thank you. So removed from the consent agenda at my request just now was item 3CI, the rules of procedure for the select board of the town of Brandon. And I did just have a small number of edits to make. This is a three-page document that we adopted a few, few years ago. And basically, on page two, under agendas and meetings are the only edits that I have to suggest. One of them says, this is item D2 of this policy. It talks about where the agendas will be posted and it says on the bulletin board outside the post office in Forestdale. But I believe the town is now posting on the bulletin board at the Junction Store. Right, that's the one that's on the top of our agenda now, 2265 Forestdale Road in Forestdale. Is that right, Mr. Manager?
That is correct.
So I would just suggest that we remove the three words outside or four words, outside post office in. So it would just say, oh no, just outside post office. So it would say town clerk's office, bulletin board in Forestdale. That would be my suggestion there. And then it's the same thing in E2, just removing the three words outside the post office. And then the other suggestion I have is because we adopted this long before COVID and those kinds of accommodations were allowed by the legislature. So E1, letter E, number one, says regular meetings shall take place on the second and fourth Mondays of the month at 7:00 PM at the Brandon Town Hall, 1 Conant Square Basement Meeting Room. And I would just suggest that we would add or by Zoom while authorized by the legislature. Any objection to that?
No.
The other one is also in item E in number four. It talks about remote meetings. And it uses the old rule, which was that if a quorum or more of the body attended the meeting without being physically present at the designated meeting location, the agenda for the meeting shall designate at least one physical location where a member of the public can attend and participate in the meeting. At least one member of the body or at least one staff or designee of the body shall be physically present at each designated meeting location. And I wonder if, since the legislature allows us to work without that, I wonder if we could just strike those two sentences for this year. Or if you had another solution, another way to do it would be to insert a clause before them that says something like absent legislative action stating otherwise or something. I think the easiest thing for us for this year would just be to remove those two sentences, requiring the physical meeting place because we're not required to do that right now. Does that sound good?
Yeah, are you making that as a motion?
I would make everything that I said as a motion, as one comprehensive motion.
All right, I'll second it.
Charlene, did you get all those bits? Thank you. So that's D2 and E2 to remove outside the post office. E1 to add the Zoom possibility. And then E4 to remove the physical meeting language, physical meeting place language. So there's a motion by me, second by Mr. Wyman. Is there discussion?
Good idea, thanks.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that you all know that it's not entirely staged managed, even a consent agenda. You know, we do pay attention. So if there's no more, do we, we have the motion ready to vote. All in favor of making those changes to the rules of procedure for this year, say aye.
Aye.
All right. That's unanimous. Great. So if I could have a moment, I just wanted, I do want to thank the voters for continuing me on the board and thank the board members for choosing me as chair again. And welcome Mike Markowski to the board tonight. We look forward to your service. And as we get underway in the new board year, I just would like to take a moment to simply reaffirm for the benefit of all the members of the public what the basic concept is here. And the basic concept is that all of us, you and me and the board members and Dave and Charlene, we all call Brandon our home. All of us could be doing something else, I dare say, more enjoyable or more profitable or more relaxing right now. But we're here because we're willing. And you, the members of the public who are here tonight, are also willing to give time and talent and energy to making Brandon better. If you doubt that about anyone at a select board meeting, I would invite you to reconsider your own motivations. We're all here acting in good faith and goodwill, and we will assume the same of all the other participants. As a board, we do have rules of procedure that are lightly adapted from the VLCT suggested model. We do need to have these rules to ensure that our work can be done without an undue cost of time. For the past four years and going forward, I do not plan to suddenly change my method. I have chaired these board meetings in a way that I hope fosters decency and order and also recognizes that we are a small board in a small town. And so public input is always solicited and always welcomed. There may be sometimes a difference between public input being welcomed and public input being determinative of the board's action. But please, if you're not sure whether now or later is the appropriate time to offer your contribution at a select board meeting, simply raise your hand and ask. I don't honestly recall a single instance in chairing the previous 100 board meetings when I declined to recognize someone who gave me even a small hint that they wanted to speak. So you as Brandon residents have more or less a rolling opportunity to contribute to board meetings. First, in the agenda item that's dedicated to public comment, tonight that is number eight. Secondly, after the board has had its chance, the public can comment in every other agenda item, either before or after a vote, and whether I ask directly for public contributions or not. And thirdly, at the end of the meeting, when I call for announcements, that's kind of the last opportunity that you'd have to address the meeting in the public. We do appreciate all of you. We do hope to hear from you in these meetings. And we do hope to do good things together that we can all be proud of. Mr. Atherton, I think we're ready for the town manager's report.
Okay, this is Mary Port for the weeks of February 22nd.
Is Dave looking at me because he wants me to give him a suggestion or is he looking at me because his screen froze?
I think he froze.
Oh, oh, wait, he's back.
Guys all froze too. That was weird.
Dave, you were like on the edge of your seat.
Let me. Is it better now? No?
Yeah, yeah, you're coming across clear.
You know, it's saying like the thing is unstable. It's been doing this all day. Did you hear everything or?
Nothing.
Nothing.
I said it all. I don't know what happened, guys. Sorry. Um, all right, we'll try it again. We've loaned one of our police cruisers out to the town of Pittsburgh for about a month. They, they sustained some damage to one of theirs during the high windstorm on March 1st. So we have, we have a MOU and like a lease agreement in place, but it was nice that we could help them out. And we did have an extra older cruiser to, to give them. So if you see the Brandon Cruiser in Pittsburgh, it's supposed to be there. Had another meeting with Army Corps of Engineers on March 2nd to discuss next steps of flood resiliency. We're now looking at the history of high flows through the storm events and calculating mitigation costs like buyout, infrastructure repairs, et cetera. So it's going pretty well, actually. It's a, it's a fun, fun project to be part of. And with that, I've also received final approval from FEMA for the 389 Newton Road buyout. So once the grant agreement is signed, I will be able, be able to order the property appraisal. So we should see that sub grant agreement here in a week or so. Truck number six in the highway department is back in the shop for more mechanical repairs. This is one of our older international trucks that has been repaired a lot. All I know right now is it's leaking coolant and they're estimating around 15,000. I haven't seen the, the estimate yet from the shop. So once that's there, we will go from there. But we probably are going to want to start looking at pricing out a new truck because this one is pretty old. Started the annual update to the local emergency management plan. I'm hoping to have it ready for the board by the next meeting. One other thing I wanted to add on here that has come up a couple of times in the last week. Uh, I think it came in maybe town meeting too, that there was some conversation about the salaries with, with town employees and one being the, what town employees some were paid for during the segment six project. As, as I think most of you know, I assume the deployment project manager role, not on my own, by default, Vtrans wanted me to do it because I did not want to bid it out again when our last one left. So with that, there was, there was this, an hourly rate involved with the time that I spent on, on working on segment six. And I just wanted to let folks know that, you know, this was something that we had to do. And we went and did it. We did have one of our bookkeepers who was doing invoicing that we were able to build some of that time out with too. We saved the town quite a bit of money by not hiring another engineering firm to do this MPM work. And I think it paid off. So I did let some folks know that all of the information required, if folks want to see what there were for invoices, any my time sheets, all of that is public record. It's all available here anytime anybody wants to see it. With that said, we'll move on to rec news. Basketball started at the Middlebury Rec Department. Baseball sign up will be out this week. Kickball will commence in the spring. We're slowly allowing programming to resume in the town hall. Table tennis and cornhole will be starting the week of March 15th. And we're waiting for a quote from Markowski Excavating to develop a walking path around Estabrook. We will be writing grants for Estabrook improvements, including some fencing and the paths. And that is all I have this evening.
Thank you, Dave. Any questions for the town manager from the board? Tracy?
Yeah, going back to the truck, Dave. What year was that truck?
I'd have to look it up, Tracy. I don't know right off. It's, it's, it's the international that does not have the tub body on it. It's the other one. It's pretty old. I, I'm sure I have a list here somewhere. I'd have to look it up.
Do, do we have, do we have a value of that repaired? What it would, if, if we were to put that 15,000 into it, what's going to be our value of that truck when we're all done?
We don't. That's why we're trying, we're trying to figure out what this estimate is going to be to do the repairs. Unfortunately, right now we need a truck, so. I don't know. We didn't, we're waiting for, it's down at Earl's right now and they're like going to let us know. I thought I'd have the estimate by today.
All right, thanks.
Sure.
Other questions for the town manager from the board? How about from other people in the meeting tonight? Questions for the town manager. I see a hand, Brent Buehler.
Um, yes, I would just want to thank David for the clarification on the Route 7 compensation he received. It had been a rumor out on the street and rather than rely on rumors, I thank you for the clarification.
Sure, just to let you know, the truck I've been driving the last two weeks is my father-in-law's because my car's in the shop getting repaired. Thanks, I bought that out of all this money. It's just, it's unstraightened. No, I didn't.
It wasn't a Route 7 thing. Been there, done that.
Thank you, Brent, and thank you, Dave. Other questions for the town manager? Okay, he's always available. We call on him throughout the meeting.
Mr. Chair.
Sure, Mr. Moore, Bill.
Bill, I, I was, I was hoping to sort of tag on to the end of the report. The town manager asked me to report to the board about the goings on or the happenings for the Otter Creek Communications Union District, of which I'm the chair and just want to let you know that there's a lot of money that's getting ready to be poured into Communication Union Districts. Unfortunately, the, the legislation isn't quite solid or solidified, so we don't know what that's going to mean for us. It's going to be more money for us to operate. As far as the what we can do, like, we're certainly not in a position yet to start building out infrastructure. We still have, our business plan is still being put together and then after that, at that point, we'll be working on and, you know, some high-level engineering about where we'll be able to build. But also entering into this is the fact that Consolidated Communications has indicated they plan on doing extensive build out of fiber in a lot of the Otter Creek Communications Union towns, including Brandon, with an eye toward fall of 2021 of having, they say, fiber to the, fiber to the home and through Brandon, through downtown Brandon. So that's all the news that's fit to print so far. I mean, as we get more information, it'll be available. Our next meeting is March 17th. And, and you know, anybody can come to the meetings. But we are, our district encompasses a bunch of towns that aren't just Brandon and Goshen anymore, but all the way down to Pollet and Polley and Bravon. So, yeah.
Great, Bill. Yeah, Tim?
Yeah, I was just clicking through the Green Fleet data when Tracy acts about the truck and I realized that I have the truck six stuff here. It's actually a 2013 according to the Green Fleet data that I, I've been following. Just a piece of information.
Good to have. Thank you, Tim. And Bill, thank you for all the work that you're doing with the Communications Union District. That has been, I think, a great thing for Brandon to be part of and it's exciting to hear that there may be some additional funding coming toward it and to do the good work that it has to try to build out accessible, high-quality internet for all these kinds of meetings so that everyone in the community has access to do this and to educate themselves and do commerce and do the, all the other kinds of things that now kind of require us to have good, robust internet. So thanks, Bill, for being a leader.
Well, hopefully primarily so Dave's face doesn't freeze in those awful positions.
Right. Very good. Any other questions for the town manager? If not at this time, we will go on to number five, which is to set dates for hearings on the noise ordinance. I was asked to clarify that these are, these are the listening sessions before the ordinance even gets drafted, right? So when the ordinance gets drafted, there will then be also at least one official hearing. We will abide by the, the requirements for the process for adopting a public-facing ordinance. So at this time though, we're just looking for input from Brandon residents about noise. So we are looking at some meeting dates. What's the pleasure of the board? Does anyone have a recommendation for a meeting date or two sometime in the near future?
Can, can we do that at a, can we do that like half an hour before a board meeting on a meeting day, which?
Yeah, I think what I suggested last time was that we do one meeting in that way, which is kind of the usual hearing style, either at 6 o'clock or 6:30 before a regular board night. But that we do kind of deliberately do another one at a time that's not a weekday evening in case there are people who find it difficult or inconvenient to, to make that kind of time. So I was thinking, you know, we could do it as early as the 22nd. We could have, that's our next board meeting. We could have the intentional listening session about noise ordinance. We could do that at 6 o'clock or 6:30 on the 22nd and then also schedule another one for some other day of the week. Maybe a weekend even or something. And these kinds of things, you know, the board, the whole five-member board doesn't have to be present, but as many as could be present would be helpful, I think.
Yeah, it seems good idea to maybe have the alternate meeting time on the weekend. So you would cover that weekday, weekend kind of possibility.
Uh, do you want to, do you want to set the first one on Monday, March 22nd? Dave, does that give you time to notice things? I guess maybe.
Um, March 22nd would be fine. That will, that will give us in two weeks. I mean, we have to do 48 hours, but.
Do you want to say 6 o'clock or 6:30?
I want to do 6 o'clock. It could be, it could be well-attended.
Why don't we say 6 o'clock then on Monday, March 22nd? That can be one of them. And then why don't we do another one? What's another suggestion? How about this, maybe the Saturday, two days before, the 20th or something?
Um, can I, can I just add like?
Yeah.
Seeing as how we're not meeting in person, is it going to matter if it's a weekend or a weeknight?
I'm just thinking of people who work, you know, there, there might be some people who work or who are caregivers or something. And a weeknight evening is never convenient for them.
Yeah, I, I like the idea there being, the days being relatively close together, so we kind of gather things at once. So I, I think either the Saturday or the Sunday before the Monday, the 22nd is probably a good idea.
Other thoughts?
I guess, I guess mine was, thought would be the same with Dave, that it'd be nice to have it during the week. But if the board wishes to have it on the weekend, that's what we'll do.
Seth, this is going to be done as a hearing, so it's not necessary that there's a quorum anyway, right?
Correct, yep. And this, this is not, as I said, this is not even the actual hearing that we're going to have after an ordinance would get drafted and considered. This is just kind of to inform the drafting of the ordinance.
More, more of like an just informational, looking for input type thing, right?
Looking for input, yep.
Available any day but Wednesdays.
But I, I, I think, I think you're right and I think Tim was right. Do it before, before our next meeting and just let's get it over with, get it done with.
Saturday morning, is that horrible?
That seems like a reasonable suggestion.
10 o'clock, 9 o'clock?
Let's make it 10.
10 o'clock, Saturday morning, March 20th?
Sure.
Anyone, everybody okay with that? Saturday, March 20th, 10 AM. Okay, so we'll do those two. Tracy, I think at the last meeting you had expressed a concern first, you know, folks who don't Zoom and stuff. And these are kind of Zoom-y things we're talking about here. Did, did you come up with a way or do we have, do you have a suggested way that we might get input from folks who aren't going to do Zoom to let their, let their views be heard?
Well, I mean, I think by the time we, by the time we go to do the hearings and stuff on this, I think we've still got time to figure that out. Weather, weather will definitely be more in our favor. If we're going to do something outside, I mean, we're already looking at just doing the, these meetings, the 22nd of, the 22nd of March. So I mean, it, it's going to put us into probably May before we have any hearings.
Actual hearing after a draft, I would think, yeah, it's going to be a little bit of time. Because they'll, what'll happen is we'll have the input on the 20th, input on the 22nd. I assume then the board would say, you know, either come up with two board members to start the draft or the board members might decide on their own, okay, we're going to all contribute our own thoughts and then have two board members start the draft maybe in April or something. Consult with Dave, consult with VLCT, consult with town attorney, all that kind of stuff.
Right, it seems like you were talking about, you know, people that aren't comfortable with Zoom. And it's, it's, it seems like it would make sense to encourage people to write, you know, letters if they prefer that format. And I mean, even if they let a selectman know that they had input, it would put them on the radar. It just seems like we want to offer everybody every possible way of, of, of getting their opinion in.
Right.
Well, like, like I said, I think, I think we've got time, so.
Okay.
We can figure that out as we go along.
All right, so we'll post these two sessions. Dave, can you post these in the newspaper also? And can you also in that, in that block that you're going to place there, can you also say, you know, written testimony or written input, written suggestions are also encouraged and have them send them, probably would be easiest to have them send it to you and then you distribute it to the board? Is that a good way to start? Okay, I don't know that we need a vote on any of that, but if that's the consensus of the board, we'll move forward on that basis. Saturday, the 20th of March at 10:00 in the morning on Zoom. Monday, the 22nd of March at 6:00 in the evening on Zoom, ahead of the next select board meeting. Saturday, the 20th of March at 10:00 in the morning on Zoom, Monday, the 22nd of March at six o'clock in the evening on Zoom, ahead of the next select board meeting. All right. Thank you. Item six is the road posting. Could I ask, Dave, could I ask you to introduce this?
Sure. This is our road posting we do every spring. The only new request, which I even hate to bring up, my road foreman was. Old Brandon Road. And Nickerson Road. Nickerson makes sense because Carver Street is posted anyway. And old Brandon had just never been on it before and it is a dirt road. There has been some logging there recently. So. Sean asked if we could add that onto the list. So you'd be looking. Number 43 and number 44 for the highway numbers.
Tracy.
Yeah, I mean, the only question I had on, on that is if Nickerson Road is posted. Why do we have to post Old Brandon Road?
Why not?
Huh?
Why not?
Well, I guess, I guess there isn't a reason. I mean, that, that was kind of like when we're, when we're posting McConnell Road. We're, we're posting. Van Cartland and Basin. I, I understand Burchill because it goes into, and the other roads off it, but. You're right. It's not, it's not a big deal. I just was wondering. If, if those roads are posted, there's a dead end.
So the, the only thing that we like with this Tracy is, as you know, with being a logger is. We're not telling people they can't use them. They just have to call us. When they're gonna, you know, there's days that are going to be frozen where. We're okay with the trucks, but you know, like next Thursday, it's supposed to be 60, probably not a good day to log. So it's more or less of like. A notice to request permission to use the roads, I think is the best way to look at it. And so I don't think it's going to hurt if we have. Old Brandon on there. Sean did ask for it, so.
Hey, he, he want, he wants it, put it up there.
All right. Is there, this one, we do need a vote. Is there a motion from the board?
I'll make a motion to approve the list.
Motion for, motion from Tracy, is that a second from Michael?
No, I was going to discuss. Yeah, if I can. Is it worth, I know it's a narrow, narrow street, but middle road that comes off of 73 down to. 53. I don't see that on the list. Is there? Reason that's not. Up here in Forestale. It's the one that goes behind Dave's store. Up, it's like a one lane road, but it does come out of the highway to another state highway.
So. North Street is posted.
Okay.
I don't know if a truck could even make the corners to get onto that road.
Well, I know they're coming down off of Route 73. I don't know why they would, but. I just didn't know if you've ever posted it. If not, that's fine. I'm just a more of a question than anything on my end.
We didn't. We didn't post. Oh, go ahead, Dave.
No, that's all right. Go, go ahead.
No, we didn't post North Street because. We go from North Street to. The shop road. Newton or Newton Road. So we had, so trucks hadn't access in, into the gravel pits. So we've, we've kept North Street open.
Right.
If I remember right.
No, you're right, Tracy. We did that a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
So we could, the trucks could go out of the pit and woodcraft them.
Right.
Yeah, just after we closed up our pit. Thanks, Dave.
You guys are doing, not me.
I'll move to the second of Tracy's motion, I guess.
All right. So we've got a motion from Mr. Wyman and a second from Mr. Markowski. Is there more discussion? Public input. Anyone else? Okay, if not, we're ready to vote. All in favor of the road posting notice, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
That was unanimous, none opposed. Okay, number seven, we have consider a policy of select board members in board appointed positions. I sent this within probably the hour to the board. So it's not optimal because it didn't make it into the packet. But basically, the idea is that. It's difficult for an appointed board to have a select. Board member sitting on it because there is often the impression or the appearance that. Perhaps that select board member is either speaking for the select board as they serve on this other board. Or there is perhaps the appearance that that select board member has additional authority. Maybe compared to some other members of the board. So there's a recognition, I think, at the board level, a consensus that it's not appropriate. For a sitting select board member to also serve on a board that the select board appoints. So just to be very clear, this doesn't mean that any of the select board members could not serve on the chamber board or on. You know, some other committee or nonprofit group, all those kinds of things are still valid and good ideas. It's, so there's three points to the little memo that I sent out. One. A serving select board member by virtue of their position on the select board. Self disqualifies from serving on a town board or commission whose members are appointed by the select board. Charlene, I'll send you this stuff. Sorry. That's one. Two is very closely related. A serving select board member by virtue of their position on the select board self disqualifies from serving as a delicate. Alternate representative coordinator or in any other position appointed by the select board. So those, those are the single person positions that sometimes we send like to the RRPC or whatever. And the third one was suggested to me. That the select board will not appoint a second member of the same household to a single board or commission. And when that one came to me, it made me think of another one, which I didn't even write down. So I'll read that to you. This is probably would be item four. A member of a board or commission that is appointed by the select board. Or an officer who's appointed by the select board. Who then is either elected or appointed to the select board. Must resign their other position upon commencing their select board service. And then as I got all of those out to you, you know, and again, this is based on input from previous meeting or two. I, I kind of thought. Maybe this is not even the right thing to do to have a whole separate policy. We do have a policy that we adopted. Just last month about vacancies on boards of committee, boards and committees. And I would suggest that these things that we're trying to accomplish might be better, not as a standalone policy. But instead of being number one, two, three, four here, they might be number like eight, nine, 10, 11. Added to this policy that we adopted last month. So I'm offering that out to you for discussion.
I, I think it, everything you've written down and you've come up with, I think it sounds. Where it needs to be.
Thanks, Tracy. Tim, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think the only thing that I'm pondering is, is this idea that two people from the same household. I guess I can think of some examples where there might be, you know, two people who, who share an interest and. And, and I guess I don't see. A specific conflict in that. I mean, if they, if we have the need for people to be on a. And these people are willing to serve. I can see how we might weigh that, you know, when we do the appointment, because I think that it might be relevant. But it, it just doesn't seem like an obvious conflict to me that just because people are in the same household. They couldn't have, you know, independent constructive participation on a, on a board or panel.
Sure. Does anyone else want to speak to that point?
I. I kind of, I kind of like the idea. Like that because there's always. I just kind of think it, it needs to be kept separate. For. I don't, I just don't believe there's, there's, there should be two members of a household appointed to any board that we're going to appoint to. I'm, I'm not comfortable with it. I guess to. Put it out here.
Kind of in agreeance with Tracy here. I mean. If you got two members of a household. Appointed to positions, I mean, business doesn't stop at the meetings, you know. There could be decisions possibly made outside of, outside of a hearing or a meeting. With everybody else, so. Thank you. That's a good thing.
So that's something to consider. We do have, you know, the town has. A conflict of interest and ethical conduct policy, which the board adopted in 2019. And that remains in force. That's a pretty substantial piece of document there. And then we have this other one from last month that was designed specific to boards and committees. The handbook that the league gives the select board members does talk about, you know, apparent conflict. And actual conflict and things of that nature. And I think that it might be. I, I guess my impression of that point, Tim, since you raised it, would be that that might be an apparent conflict. Of interest that could be interpreted as, as, as Mike said. Kind of lending itself toward. Business being conducted, not entirely in an open meeting kind of process.
I mean, all valid points. I, I, I hear you. I, I guess I'm just thinking in a small community where it's sometimes challenging to find people to. Be appointed. I mean, we have physicians that haven't had appointments for a while that. Well, anyways, I, I said.
Yeah. And, and that's why this is not a consent agenda item. This is a, let's talk about it and figure out what is the best thing for our town kind of item, because you're right. We do go with boards that are not fully staffed quite a lot. Less recently, I think than at some times, I think we've had a lot of interest from folks. To participate in town government by service on a board or committee and we're appreciative of that. So, and this clearly is nothing we're going to vote on tonight. Because what we always do with policy decisions is kind of accept them or introduce them at one meeting and we talk about them and then. We always lay them over at least one meeting. So. I guess, you know, I have those four things and I would just suggest that tonight we introduce them. And maybe give some thought to whether you want to just kind of mash those two policies together so that there's kind of one comprehensive policy. That just talks about appointments, you know, it'll, the one that we did last month really talks mostly about the process of making an appointment. And this one really talks about eligibility for appointments or disqualification from appointments. But maybe together they would make one sensible, comprehensive policy about the select board's board appointments. I see a hand from David Atherton.
Yes, Seth, I, I like the idea of. It being combined with the other policies for the select board members. I think. The way that you wrote this is definitely, you know, geared more towards the select board member and not. The other boards. And if we do, you know, if we change language and. And I think there's, there's nothing that says we can't change language and the other, you know, the board, the other board policies as well. But it might not be a bad idea to have like this select board. Policy pretty well written and, you know, streamlined and then do the same thing for all the other boards as well. I don't think that would hurt to have two policies.
Other discussion, other input? So what's the consensus? What shall we get ready for the next meeting?
I've.
Yeah, Tracy?
I think. I kind of agree with Dave. I guess it wouldn't do any hurt to have the two. Policies, one select board and one the other. And. I mean, I think we can. Go to the point of. Starting to draft that or.
If we do want to keep them separate, I think probably we do want to at least move that one item out about. Second member of the same household on the single board. That one probably does want to go to the other. Document because that's not really specific to the select board members. Does that make sense? So if that sounds good, why don't, why don't I bring it to you both ways next time? I'll bring you two side by side. Policies and I'll bring you one comprehensive policy and we'll make sure that they get into the packet and that there's time to think about it and we can decide which way. Seems like a best fit for Brandon. I just, I do want to emphasize that, you know, this is going kind of above and beyond. What state law requires, state law has, and the Vermont League of Cities and Towns has developed this excellent thing, a chart they call incompatible offices. So like if you're the town treasurer, you can't be. On a select board type thing. It's like not allowed in the statute. So we're. Saying all of that is still in place and also in Brandon, we're not going to do this or that. You're not going to be on the select board and also be on the. Planning commission or whatever, because the select board appoints it. Yeah, Tracy?
No, go ahead. I. Good.
Okay. Anything else to be said on those? Okay, if not, we'll go on to public comment and participation. Anybody on the board tonight, we start with the board. Anybody with an item that doesn't appear on the agenda later? If not, does anyone else attending the meeting tonight, any member of the public have anything they'd like to raise with the board or to the community? Not at this time. Okay, we can. We'll have the last call will be toward the end of the meeting. How about Butch Shaw? I see Representative Butch Shaw here. He often has a few words of wisdom.
Well, we've been off for a week, so that's a good thing. We're gearing back up, going back in into our Zoom sessions. Tomorrow morning and we hope to have all our budgets done by next Friday. And we're looking forward to seeing what's in the bill that's in Washington. But don't spend the money yet until we know exactly what's in the bill. So I guess that's where we stand right now on Mr. Chair on the financial line.
Thank you, Butch, for the update. Yes, Dave.
I couldn't remember if Bill Moore brought this up at the last meeting or not, that. Red Clover Brewery is like in the top 20 for the nation's. Best new microbrews. And I think they're in the top 10 now as well. So that's pretty cool. These little guys next door, you know.
The number eight. The number eight you can vote.
Yeah, that's awesome. You know, they're, they're competing with these big city breweries and we got these little guys in town that are just kicking it. So it's awesome.
You know, Bill, can you put that voting link into the chat? I know you, it was sent out and, you know, it's a great way to support our local business.
Will do.
Bernie Carr has something to say.
The voting ends the 11th, so this week you got to get your votes in.
Other public comment? I just want to say before we go to the bills, we did do a bunch of appointments as a consent agenda tonight, and I really do want to thank everybody. Who signs up to serve on these town boards and committees. We appointed tonight. A number of people who have served for a number of years, which is always appreciated, good, long sustained service. And we also appointed tonight. A couple of people who have not yet, this will be their first time. So that's a good mix of people from the community. Taking their turn and making their contribution. There's just a short list of dozen names or so. So I, I want to thank for the BLSG. Representatives Wayne Rousenberger and Richard Russ. The Budget Committee, Jan Coolidge and Barry Varian. Barry's here tonight. Barry, thank you for being part of that Budget Advisory Committee again. Fence viewers, Lou Favor, Todd Nielsen and John Reynolds. And Todd Nielsen is on the call tonight. Todd, thank you for saying yes.
Oh, you're welcome. No problem.
Appreciate it. Green Update Coordinator, James Leary. Inspector of Lumber, Shingles and Wood, Bob Kilpeck. Rutland County Solid Waste Representative, Gabe McGegan. Tree Warden, Wayne Kingsley and Ware of Coal, Lou Favor and Mrs. Hopkins. Wow. So thanks to all who do those things for the town. Much appreciated. All right, we'll go on to number nine, which is the warrant. It's very small. We don't have Mr. Bailey, we don't even have Mr. Bailey on the call to ask about the bills. What's the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion to approve the warrant, March 8th. Make a motion to approve the warrant, March 8, 2021, amount of $45,236.91.
Okay. Motion for Mr. Wyman and a second for Mr. Coolidge. Are there any questions on any of the listed bills to pay? There are not. All right, all in favor of paying the warrant, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed, say no? The ayes have it, it's unanimous. So there's two executive sessions, but there's also a liquor control commissioners meeting. So why don't we, before we recess, what we generally do is recess the select board, have the liquor meeting in public session, and then we come back as the select board and do the executive sessions and any action happening after them. So at this time, before we recess the select board, this would be like the last opportunity for announcements, suggestions for the good of the community, stuff of that nature. No one else on that? Okay, so at 7:51, we'll recess the select board and I'll call to order the Brandon Board of Liquor Control Commissioners. Is there a motion on the agenda that was posted for the liquor commissioners?
Motion.
Mr. Wyman moves to approve, is there a second? Second for Mr. Coolidge, any changes to be made? All in favor of the agenda as it was posted, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed, say no, but that was unanimous, the ayes have it. Approval of, we'll do it separately tonight, I guess. Approval of the minutes of February 22nd.
Make a motion to approve.
Mr. Coolidge moves to approve, Mr. Wyman has a second. Any errors or omissions in the minutes as read or minutes as submitted? None heard, all in favor of the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? That's Hopkins, Coolidge, Wyman, Guiles for aye. Is there a nay? Is there an abstention?
I just forgot, I just forgot to say aye, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I was reading.
So that's unanimous. At this point, I'll disclose that I have a business relationship with Lilac Inn and with one of the members of Foley's Taco and Bean. That's the only ones I have. Does anyone want me to recuse myself from the rest of the meeting?
Yep. Can we do that as a consent agenda, Seth?
We can do three and four as a consent agenda. I think Sue wants to talk about five.
Okay.
Is there a motion to take number three and number four, the liquor licenses, first class, third class, and number four, the outside consumption permits as a consent agenda? Mr. Wyman moves to consent agenda, is there a second? Ms. Coolidge, any objection? No. Consent agendas are not debatable, all in favor of item three and four as a consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. Item five, Sue Gage is on the call. Sue, if you can hear us, do you want to tell us about the memo? Issue there? I can do my best here.
Oh, no, I'm here, sorry. I was muted. So you guys approved that liquor license for that company last year. I think it was in March of last year and they decided not to open. He's the guy that's going in where May's place used to be on Center Street. Can you turn that down? So this is, the liquor board, they've been holding it up at the DLC for a year and they just asked a letter of sort of second approval to make sure it was okay to let them go ahead.
I think this is the first time we've been asked to do that, so thank you for, thank you for explaining the conditions and the circumstances about why we're being asked to do that. What's the pleasure of the board on that?
Make a motion to approve it.
Motion for Mr. Wyman, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second for Mr. Markowski, any discussion? All in favor of signing the updated support for the liquor license permit for River Pub and Grill, say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Perfect. Item six.
All new adjourned.
Coolidge moves to adjourn, is there a second?
Banging.
Okay.
Second from Wyman, not debatable, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? That's unanimous, so the liquor commissioners are adjourned at 7:55. And we are back, I'll call the select board back to order at 7:55. And the first executive session is regarding the planning commission. Is there any suggestion or any motion from the board before we go into that executive session?
I'd like to make a motion to approve all three for the planning commission.
All right, so we have applications or letters of interest from Todd Nielsen, Bob Foley and Liz Gregorick. We have a seat that is open on the planning commission from the resignation of Stephanie Jerome. And we have a seat open on the planning commission from the resignation of Michael Shank. We do have, according to the, the league's handbook, we do have per 24 VSA, section 4321, we do have the ability to set the number of planning commissioners at any number not lower than three and not more than nine. And currently we have five commissioners who are still serving. I'm just going to rattle off their names so that we're all clear. So currently we have Alexandra Brier on the planning commission, Ralph Ethier, William Mills, Lowell Rasmussen and Allison Walter. So there's a motion for Mr. Wyman to appoint Liz Gregorick, Todd Nielsen and Bob Foley so that we would then have an eight-member planning commission at this time. Is that correct?
Yep.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
There's a second. Any discussion?
I, I think the only thing I would, I would put in is that I, I think it's a great idea to appoint these people. I'm grateful that they're volunteering and with the ability to appoint them all, it seems appropriate. I think in the future, if we are suggesting we're going to do interviews, I think we should probably follow through and do them just for, you know, if we say that's what we're going to do, I think we should do it. It, it just struck me.
Well taken. I do apologize to those folks who are interested in serving on the planning commission if you were counting on and looking forward to being grilled by the select board and now we're disappointed not to have that opportunity. I will say it was a little bit of a fluid situation. I think that we were aware of one planning commission vacancy, but then a second one came, I think, since the previous select board meeting. So the situation changed a little bit in the last number of days. And, but you're, you're right, Tim, we should be respectful of other people's time.
There, there's another kind of aspect to this, which is that, especially with the planning commission, I mean, it, it can be different with, with perhaps, you know, positions, a coal wearer is one that I think is less necessary to get someone's perspective on coalway. But with the planning commission, I think it might actually be helpful in the future to hear, you know, people's views about how they feel about the planning commission or whether it should be doing one thing as opposed to another thing. Or I just think it would help to elevate the awareness of what their, their input to the board can be and, and possibly their, their positions that might guide our town going forward.
Sure, so I mean, we're in discussion and we're working on small board rules and basically, you know, this is a limited crowd tonight, but does, does Liz or Bob or Todd, do you have anything, like, did you prepare a statement? Is there anything you would like to share in a public kind of session? Or would any of you like to have an executive session? If you want to request one, we can certainly do one.
This is Liz.
Hi, Liz.
Hi. I, being in HR, love interviews. I'm kidding. Now, I appreciate the courtesy and just want to say thank you for giving me the opportunity and I look forward to serving our town and representing it proudly.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Here.
Oh, hi, Todd Nielsen.
Yeah, Todd.
I really have no comment on the interview. I'll do it with or without, it doesn't matter. If you guys need me, I'm there for you.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
And this is Bob and I've been on Zoom since five o'clock this morning when I started with China, so I, I could do without an interview tonight as well. But Tim, to your point about interviews, I think they're good. I served on a planning board many, many years ago and it was an elected, it was an elected position, so yes, I think there is some credence in what you said because the position itself does have a little bit more responsibility, for sure.
Thanks for that.
And I'll be candid, you know, I wouldn't always be in favor of doing an appointment without an interview to this board, because this board, I really do think, is the most important board that the select board appoints. I think that the planning commission and the town plan and the land use ordinance are among the most important documents that any, any working group in our town produces for the town. And it's only because we live in a small town that I'm able to say with confidence that I'm confident that Liz and I'm confident that Bob and I'm confident that Todd will make a good contribution to, a good positive contribution to the planning board because, the planning commission, because I know them as people. And I'm grateful for that opportunity. It's not always the case that I would know everybody who applies, but in this case, I do happen to have had some conversations at different levels with all three of them and would be really pleased to see them on our planning commission. Further discussion? If not ready to vote, all in favor of appointing Todd Nielsen and Bob Foley and Liz Gregorick to the Brandon Planning Commission, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? That was unanimous. No need to ask for the ayes. Thank you all three. Dave and Elaine, or maybe Dave through Elaine at the town office will get in touch with you about the term expirations and those kinds of things. Dave, is there like a planning commission handbook like there is for the select board? Is there something from the league?
Thinking of that right now, I, I don't believe we have anything here. I can certainly check with the league. I mean, that's the blue O on the town plan is pretty much what everyone's working off of, so if anyone wants copies, let me know, but they're on our website too. And I'll look, there, there's got to be something for planning.
There is, I think the league has something.
Yeah.
And so you will at least be able to let the sitting planning commissioners know of the appointments and then maybe put everybody in touch with each other by email so that they can plan their, their next meeting?
Yep.
Is that a good first step? Okay. Thank you again. So there's no need for that executive session, if I'm understanding, we took that vote and did the discussion in public session. And last call for announcements, because this executive session, I believe we are going to have. So is anything else to be said in public session?
That's.
Charlene?
Just one clarification, because Tim added an executive session.
Right.
We're already two listed on the agenda. So you actually having three?
We, we were, we were going to have three, but.
You're only having two?
We're going to only have two. So the number 10 one that says to include planning commission applicants, that's the one we don't have to have because we just spoke with them in the public session.
Very good, so there will be two, okay.
Yep, there'll be two, we're going to have number 11 as it was posted and then Tim added what is now number 12.
Okay.
Yep.
Very good, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Good night.
Good night, thanks.
Charlene.
Night, Charlene.
So item 11 then is an executive session that was warned. This is regarding the appointment or employment or evaluation of a public officer or employee under 1 VSA 313A3 to include the town manager. So is there a motion to enter the executive session?
Don't move.
Motion from Wyman and second from Coolidge, any discussion about entering this executive session? Okay, all in favor of entering executive session at 8:04, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? That's unanimous.